9:00 PM, we'll call this meeting to order. Just before I start, I would like to say we have a couple of councillors and staff members that may end up having to leave the room. They have the flu today, so we will not be asking them to ask permission. And please bear with me, as this is my first council meeting, and I will do my best, and I'm sure you will keep me on track. Thank you. We are going to have the Planning District Board Meeting first. Approval of the agenda?
My question.
Duncan?
Why my motion is not on the agenda?
It's being dealt with. Like, yeah, Gary?
That would come forth at the regular meeting of council.
It's already been talked about, walked on.
Okay, second question. Why the Trail Breakers Snowmobile Club?
This is the Planning District.
It will do that first, and then it's go on to the...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Gary?
Just to mention that, obviously, for members of the audience, we have Mayor Dennis Fenske and Councillor Dennis Foley on the line. And regrets from...
Regrets for the Planning District, we have from Brett Mack and David Haseman. So our first resolution is Resolution 2018... Oh, approval of the agenda, sorry. We've got talk taken away from that. Can I have a move in or a second, or Kathy and Penny? Okay, let's move on. Resolution 2018-001, moved by Blake Ellis, seconded by Judy Collada. Be it resolved that the minutes of the public hearing for bylaw 44-2017, held in council chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, December 11, 2017, be adopted and circulated. Call for the question?
Aye.
Again, all in favor? Okay, carried? Yes?
Obviously, the board members can all put their hands up at the same time, so we can identify who's voted.
I need favors, yes.
Resolution 2018-002, moved by Judy Collada, seconded by Kathy Valentino. Be it resolved that the minutes of the Thompson Planning District, held in council chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, December 11, 2017, be adopted and circulated. Call for the question? All in favor? Thank you. Resolution 2018-003, moved by Penny Byer, seconded by Blake Ellis. Be it resolved that the Thompson Planning District approved the Thompson Planning District 2018 fees and fines schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Kathy, Duncan? Okay, we're going into the regular meeting. Meeting called to order. Kathy? Blake? Okay, we have approval to agenda, any changes? Yes?
I've gone a resolution to approve an administration to prepare a new bylaw. So as Resolution 7.7, a resolution to approve the repeal of bylaw 1957-2017, and direct administration to prepare a new bylaw for consideration. As Resolution 7.7.
You said 7.7, it'd be 7.10.
7.7.
It says...
You're looking at the long one, you're looking at December 11.
No, I'm not. That's, sorry, 6.12, sorry.
6.12?
Sorry.
Is it a bylaw? Is it under a bylaw?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Okay, so 7.12.
6.12.
6.12.
6.12.
Okay, I think we have approval of the agenda as amended?
Why the memo we got from the Assistant Executive Assistant say, "We call for a special meeting for the Trail Breakers Snowmobile Club," and none of one, not, how should I put it? Where's the law that you guys can walk away without discussing about it? And the Executive Assistant sent us an email saying, "Due to lack of quorum, the special regular meeting of council scheduled for Wednesday, December 13, 2017, is canceled. The agenda item that was going to be discussed tonight, which is a discuss discussion on the Trail Breakers Snowmobile Club, will be added to January 2, 2018, regular meeting of council agenda." I didn't see it, so can someone explain this?
Gary?
As you've indicated, I mean, obviously, the special meeting of council that was called was canceled due to the lack of quorum for it. If you are wanting to sort of add that as a resolution, I would just make that my motion to add it as 6.13.
He's asked me to move a councillor Madichak. Do you want to talk about today, or you want to delay it for next time?
I'd like to delay it for another special meeting, simply because a special meeting has one topic, one topic only, so I'd like to have a special meeting still held on that, but not tonight. This is a regular meeting.
We'll go through the motion and the form for a special meeting, Gary. In the meantime, Judy?
Well, I think lack of quorum is the wrong term. I think boycott is a better term. For instance, we were all at a meeting at, from 4:00 to 5:00, and at 5:00 o'clock you went Safeway, at least six people saw you there. I would say the special meeting was boycotted, not lack of quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. I definitely said before, it was the 13th of December, I had already had a plan to have a plane go out, and other members, it was within two days' notice. I would definitely be willing to attend a meeting in January, as long as it's not on a day I'm out of town or have some plans. Thank you. Yes, Gary?
So in regards to, I mean, obviously, if council wants to hold another special meeting to discuss the Trail Breakers issue, as council is all in attendance tonight, I mean, they can set that date now, or the individual councillor can submit a special meeting request and a meeting can be held at that point. It's up to council as to, do they want to set a date at this point, as everybody's in attendance tonight?
Yes, Judy?
Are we going to set a date?
Have councillors commit, or are we going to have five councillors send their regrets? So I would like to see commitment if we're going to set a date for another special meeting.
Okay, I can tell you right off now, I can't, I will not be in town next week for a meeting, January 24th, I can't do a meeting January 21st. Other than that, if you provide some dates, I can let you know where I am, and I'm sure the same with everybody else. Yes, Kathy?
Can I recommend we just have the councillor that wants to call the special meeting send the email, and then the request will be sent out?
Okay, so basically, if you guys send out a memo, and if you want, check around with councillors before you send out the memo, so you know who's going to be around and who's available.
Actually, I'll come see Gary one day soon. Same way the first meeting was called?
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Fenske? If council chooses to call a special meeting, as mayor, I have to call that meeting within 48 hours of the request. So if the request is made, whenever it's made, the special meeting has to occur within 48 hours of that request.
All right. Everybody hear that, understanding?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so we're not going to put that on the agenda tonight. So can we have a final approval of the agenda? Or do we... Okay.
Approval of the agenda as amended.
As amended, sorry. Approval of the agenda. Penny, Kathy? Okay, and with that, we have... Oh, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Carried?
Aye.
Okay, as I told you, I'm very nervous, and tonight, while he is not in attendance, Volker Beckman, he received Commemorative Medal for $150 from the Senate of Canada, and we'd like to present him with a certificate. He basically said he really didn't want the publicity, a couple of his things there. He was, he's reluctant to receive public presentations, there's more deserving people, and of the, there was 12 people from Manitoba for $150 Manitoba, nine from Winnipeg, one from Brandon, one from Churchill, and one from Thompson. And he says, "My best moment in the Senate chambers was when they announced the recipients, and I heard from Thompson, Manitoba. Our community needs a lot more good publicity. That was my personal satisfaction. Thank you, Volker Beckman." So very deserving for all the work he does in the community. Thank you, Volker. Okay, yes, Penny?
Volker's very humble. He says that there are more people who are deserving. Yes, there may be more people who are deserving, but he is certainly deserving. He puts in a lot of hours and a lot of effort, and it's from the heart, to raise the image of Thompson that people of the outside world have of us. And I'm sure sometimes he feels he's, forgive me for putting it this way, he probably feels like the lone wolf in that effort at times, but I think he is certainly deserving of that, and I'm glad, I'm glad that he received it. And I can certainly understand that he would feel proud hearing those words from Thompson, Manitoba, because that's what he is all about.
Thank you. Okay, without further ado, we'll go to general inquiries, and basically, we have 10 minutes for question period, so please make your questions short. If there's questions we likely can't answer, we'll put them on a list, and we will get back to you folks. Please state your name when you come to the mic.
My name is Warren Greer. I'd like to say welcome to council and the mayor. I know that we're going through hard times with valet and everything, but what's happening with the CSOs? Are you going to cut them out, or?
Gary, for that, we have come up, they're in our budget presentation, we're still working on the budget, it hasn't been finalized, but are we a privilege to give the information we have so far, Gary?
Just to indicate, obviously, is that the CSO program will continue for 2018.
So we're going to get the money for the CSOs? Where's the budget for the CSOs?
Still has to make the final determination. Council has in the past identified funds for, for the operation of the Community Safety Officer Program.
So where's this budget? For them?
Included in the 2018 budget deliberations, which council is currently going through.
Yeah, where's that money coming from?
Well, right now, it's in camera, we're talking about it. Everything is basically on the drawing board, the cutting board, everything else, but when final decisions are made, then prior to the budget being put in place, it will be brought to the public for presentation.
You're going to lay off a bunch of city workers, but you're going to keep the CSOs?
Talk like that, absolutely nothing is on the cutting board right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
And page three of your agenda down here tonight, Public Safety Committee report. The word "safe operation." My question to you is, have you ever been to the Riverside Drive, today or yesterday?
I was actually down there today.
Okay. There's a, look like a river running down there, so how come I didn't see any public work people down there and try to clean up the drain hole and let the water go to the drain?
Hey, there's a couple reasons for that today. One of the reasons being is that we're still spraying water on the hotel, and this morning when we were talked, there are some fire hoses that are buried in some of the sections across there, so you can't take the equipment. And the second part of that is, today, there were, we had a major water break on Barron's Road, the crews are actually still there working, and the water was starting to run onto the highway, so the equipment and crews were sent there. Tomorrow, we're hoping to get there, they're hoping to get some of the hoses out of the ice.
I tried to call Public Work about 4:20, but nobody answered the phone, and I called the City Hall, somebody answered the phone. But I hope the message passed to the person that responsible to have a drain hole open. I don't think you take a whole crew down there and clean up the drain hole and let the water run into the drain hole, instead, run all the way to the Riverside School. And then the car go through the water and freeze the break and cause the hazard down there. When you talk about safety, the safety of the people are more important than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to know how long you're going to wait to inform employees of budget cuts that are going to happen?
Our budget deliberations, of which our next budget meeting hasn't been set, and like I said, there's been no decision on any, you know, on what avenue anybody's going to take, and I'm sure it will be in consultation with everybody.
So we're just supposed to wait around until someone makes a decision?
I hope everybody goes about their jobs as usual, and hopefully, we can, you know, alleviate, there's, like I said, there was about 23 different options we were looking at, so the employees weren't the only option. Yes, Gary?
Just to indicate, I mean, as identified, I mean, obviously, the city has met with the union yourself and others, in that, in regards to sort of the items that are under consideration, as mentioned by Deputy Mayor Smook, the budget deliberations for council still continue, and no final decision has been made at this point. Obviously, the intent is to have a budget meeting in the next couple of weeks in order to further those processes.
Thank you.
Melanie Cutler, 232 Westwood. I have a question, I'm not really sure of the answer, so last meeting, when you guys passed the thing for the Trail Breakers, was it Plan A or Plan B that was passed? Or, I can show you a picture, diagram? So I just want to know if it's like, are you guys creating a new road past the Trail Breakers lot? Are you guys creating a new road between the new Lot 9 and Lot 7?
The resolution that was passed at council, at the December council meeting, really will revise the existing subdivision that's in that area, and move, for everybody's sort of visual aspect, the existing road slightly to the west of where that currently is.
So the business that occupying that... Sell back the city?
No, there is no business occupying that space. Existing subdivision is east of where the Trail Breakers lot is. This will redirect that road slightly to the west.
So that would go to...
So the first schematic that you showed was that deviation to the west of the road?
So it would not go through Lot 910?
No.
So it would go all the way down on, what road is that?
Footprint Road.
Yeah, so go all the way down Footprint Road and then go around? So that means Lot 910 won't have an inch access road or an exit road? We just have an entrance road?
There will be legal access for every lot in that subdivision.
Okay. Some of the things that we have to do...
You know, and the road, basically, it's only the Trail Breakers right now, and basically, we've agreed on a price, but the actual road itself likely won't be put in until other businesses go in there. So this is why you don't want to make too many commitments ahead of time, in case the businesses that we deal with want some changes or different.
And what's it setting, is it the taxpayers back? Like, how much money is it setting the taxpayers back for the area?
The Trail Breakers agreed to pay at all costs. We set a cost on, we set a cost on it, but basically, so that we don't have to wait, otherwise, we wait, have to wait until the road's built, which if we're not doing that way, so we sort of did, our staff sort of did an estimate of what the cost is going to be, and that was passed on to the Trail Breakers, and they will pay that.
Is there a cap, or the Trail Breakers are responsible for the whole amount?
I believe there was a cap.
Yes, Gary?
No, the Trail Breakers are responsible. For all costs, and we subdivided the area to accommodate the new subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
There is no cost to the city council.
Just to the Trail Breakers?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I want to start off on a positive note tonight, and recognize our fire chief for all the good work, him, police officers, and many in this community has been working hard over the last few hours on one of the biggest fires, if not the biggest I've seen in my time in Thompson. So John, I want to thank you as a leader of this community. Secondly, I attended a number of meetings in 2017, and I believe most everyone in this room knows me. I have a larger executive than you have a city council.
Yes, I just want to say to discuss... Ellsworth at the table, for those on the phone and for the radio, thank you.
So, going back again, I attended quite a few meetings, and let me tell you, as a member of the city of Thompson, I was very disappointed in 2017, the way the business was conducted there at the City Hall, in particular at city council. Now, we have a lot of work to do this year. We're in for one of the most devastating years that we've ever seen in Thompson, in my opinion. As the leader of the steelworkers, I'm quite concerned about that. We've had our first layoff, and more to come. So I'm going to make a request tonight, I'm not going to ask you a question, I'm going to make a request. You were elected by the people of Thompson to do a job. I'm asking you, you've got 10 months left, pull up your socks, start working together, and start working with the stakeholders in this town to look after the citizens, the taxpayers of the city of Thompson. That's my request tonight.
And I agree.
Good evening, my name is Monica. I'm German, so I apologize for my English already now. I cannot vote, but actually, Les took out the word out of my mouth. The perception out there inside the population is so bad of the council. It's like, I don't know how to describe it, it's like A against B, B against C, D, E. It's not about the population, it's not about the citizens, and I really, really ask you guys to break down a little bit and come down from that. We are deputies, we're councillors, or whatever, you're also citizens. You should be out there more often. You have employees now complaining or worrying about how their work is going to be, and 10 days off unpaid or whatever. That should be a sign for you, you're not with us. You're in this room, but you're not listening to what is going on out there, because people are talking, people have good ideas, and we want to respect you as human beings, and not only as the councillors defeating or beating up each other. Sorry, I don't know, might be the wrong English, don't get me wrong, it's not violence that I'm talking about, verbally, verbally. So, thank you, Les, you said it in a better English than I can ever do it, smart enough. May I have your last name? Stutte, Stutte, Stu, T, T, R.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Monica. Any more questions? Okay, with that, the 10 minutes is up. We'll move on to the agenda. Adopted, first off, adoption of minutes. Okay. Excuse me here, just a moment here. No, oh, this, regular meeting, okay. Number two? Yeah, I had put them over here. Cut. So this, oh, you had more public hearing bylaw? It was a second. Public hearing bylaw? Well, it's a second. Okay. Sorry, folks, I warned you. Resolution 2018-001, moved by Blake Ellis, Judy Collada. Okay, this was on the Planning District. Be it resolved that the minutes of the public hearing for bylaw 1958-2017, held in council chambers, Thompson, Monday, December 11, be adopted and circulated. Yeah, all, call for the question?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that was passed. Next, we have 2018, Resolution 2018-002, by Judy Collada and Kathy Valentino. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular council, meeting of council, held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, Monday, December 11, 2017, be adopted and circulated. Call for the question?
Aye.
All, passed unanimously. Okay, and then we're going to go to committee report. Public Safety Committee, Councillor Collada. Yes?
The proof of the minute?
Wasn't, we just did. We just approved the minute, the second one.
It just confused me. I have something to amend to the minute from the last meeting.
Okay, so we'll...
Too late.
We'll go back for you, sir, because since it's my first, okay? We'll start again on that one, 2018-002, moved by Judy Collada, seconded by Kathy Valentino. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in council chambers, Thompson, Manitoba, on December 11, be adopted.
Back to...
Okay, questions?
Okay, the 8.2, there's error there. From the note, they said, "Prior to the calling the question, councillor Wong made a comment in regard to councillor Foley's status." I did not ask for the job, so that's wrong. I'd like to change the terminology there. And then, at the end there, councillor Wong apologized, which I did not, I'd like to reflect this note to correct it, I did not apologize, so I'd like to change the terminology there. And then, 8.13, 8.13, is talking about the Resolution 2017-269, moved by councillor Collada, seconded by councillor Ellis. At the end there, I asked for a recorded vote, so I didn't see councillor Madichak on the, in the picture, so I'm wondering, did you oppose, or you in favor? So it's not stated there, I'd like to add that name into it. Because right here, they say, "In favor, Mayor Fenske, Deputy Mayor Smook, councillor Ellis, councillor Byer, councillor Valentino, councillor Foley, councillor Collada. Opposed, councillor Wong." So where's councillor Madichak?
Councillor Madichak?
What was the resolution?
This one, right here, you're going to take a quick look at it. So... So...
I honestly don't remember.
It's in record, if you don't want to put your name there. Or you abstain? Anyways, those are the two things I found out from the minute need to be corrected.
In clarification on what you meant about, uh, Councilor Foley with the job, you did ask him if, uh, he had a job. I was here myself.
I'm not saying, do you have a job? I said, did you find a job yet? So that can be a joke, but you guys take it out of proportion and put one into my mouth.
So he needs to identify what he wants to change.
Yeah, so exactly, the wording, okay, on the first resolution number, on the first, with your comments?
Yes. So what, what do you want to change?
From what to what?
Okay, you said a comment regarding the, uh, Councilor Foley job, like, I didn't question... You need to identify what actual wording you want to change from what wording exists in the draft minutes?
If you find a job yet, or have you got a job yet? That's exactly what it said. And then the last one, I did not apologize?
What number is that?
8.2.
We're just clarifying with the mid-private minutes, though, compared what was typed here, folks.
Thank you for your patience.
So...
Yes?
So right now is that the, the wording in the minutes? Is prior to calling the question, Councilor Wong made a comment in regards to Councilor Foley's job status?
You know what, leave that alone then, I guess it's okay, but the last part is, I did not apologize.
So what, what are you...
Wanting to change the wording to?
It's fine, I don't want to drag too long. Just change the last word, I did not apologize.
Councilor Wong, but you need to tell me the wording...
That you want to insert in, in the minutes?
I'm sorry, you interpreted my meaning wrong. That's what I say.
I would just make the motion to...
Strike the words, Councilor Wong apologized?
Okay.
We are striking the motion, uh, the, the part of the sentence that says that Councilor Wong apologized. And did you insert in that was, he was mistaken? We were mistaken? Yes, Gary?
So in regards to Councilor Wong's comments about, uh, uh, resolution, uh, which was the provisional estimates, uh, which is 8.13 in, in the previous minutes. Uh, Councilor Madichuk voted in favor, so we'll have to add his name, Councilor Madichuk.
So you have to sort of, uh, look those two changes, just to the minutes as a minute?
So resolution 2018-002, as amended by the changes, uh, to Mr. Wong's, uh, striking out of his part and addition of Mr. Madichuk's name to the approval on 8.13. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council head in council chambers, Thompson, Manitoba, be adopted as amended and as circulated. Call for the question?
Aye.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Everybody in favor? Okay, uh, can we move on to Public Safety Committee meeting? It's Councilor Colada?
Yes, thank you. Deputy Mayor Smook, uh, this is the report for, uh, this, the third and fourth quarter, that's July 1st to December 31st. The committee members are myself as chair, Mayor Dennis Fenske, Councilor Dennis Foley, City Manager Gary Sepatelli, Director of Fire and Safety, John Masquerine, RCMP Inspector Kevin Lewis, Deputy Chief of Operations, Mike Burgoyne, Deputy Chief of, of Training and Administration, uh, Salby Brown, uh, Public Safety Manager, Sonia Wiseman, Paulette Simpkins, uh, uh, I don't know what these initials stand for, but she's the manager of the homeless shelter. Giselle DeBier, she's with AFM, and, um, Nina Cordell and Chris Madichuk are citizen members of this committee. Uh, the EMS user fee reduction, Thompson Fire and Emergency Services dispatch, along with the city's finance department, reimbursed five months of ambulance invoices from June to September 17th. This was due to the EMS user reduction fee that took effect April 1st, 2017, and a previous reduction that took effect January 1st, 2017. The fire responses were during this period for 2017, from July 1st through November, compared with 2016, saw an increase in fire responses, except for a decrease in October. Ambulance responses during the period for 2017, from July through November, compared to 2016, ambulance responses decreased, except for the month of July. Safety operations during the period, residents were reminded to be cautious along the Burnwood River as the water was high and fast-moving. In August, an article from Edmonton, suicide attempts on high-level bridge down 50% was received as information to be discussed at the September meeting. The article sheds a light on what the city's emergency services have been dealing with at the Miles Heart Bridge. City Manager attended a meeting with the Minister of Infrastructure in September, along with a report from Thompson Fire and Emergency Services, showing the number of responses to the Miles Heart Bridge over a 10-year period. Installing some safety barriers on the Miles Heart Bridge may have lowered the number of responses where individuals may attempt suicide by jumping off the bridge. In November, on November 8th, 2017, the Office of the Fire Commissioner released a bulletin advising all Manitobans to check fire extinguishers following a recall. Two specific fiery virgins, uh, fire extinguisher manufacturers under the Kindle and Garrison brand names, Pindicater fire extinguishers made between 1973 and August of, August 15, 2017. The recall is based on incidents where the extinguisher, extinguishers became clogged or required excessive force to activate. There is a risk the unit might fail to discharge, or the nozzle could detach with enough force to pose an impact hazard and should be replaced. In November and December, the city received a significant amount of snow where it caused some safety concerns for both pedestrians and drivers. Residents were reminded to care and caution during this period. Community safety officers, uh, there are currently six community safety officers on duty as the seventh CSO was recently hired on with the Ontario Provincial Police Service. City Council has approved the CSO program at six officers for 2018, and that's tentative until our budget is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Colada. Any questions? We'll receive it as information, thank you very much. Resolutions, back to resolutions. Resolution 2018-003 moved by Penny Byer, seconded by Blake Ellis. Whereas Vale, Canada Limited, the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the local government, government district of Mystery Lake are signatories to a five-year letter of understanding regarding the municipal tax and funding agreements, 2013 through 2017. And whereas the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the local government district of Mystery Lake have concluded discussions with Vale, Canada, limiting, limited regarding a new four-year letter of understanding effective January 1, 2018, to December 31st, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the letter of understanding between Vale, Canada Limited, the city of Thompson, the school board, school district of Mystery Lake, and the LGD of Mystery Lake for the municipal tax and funding arrangements for a four-year term commencing January 1st, 2018, and terminating on December 31st, 2021. Ron, first?
I'd like to bring forward a motion to, uh, table this item. And, uh, the reason I'm bringing forward this motion is I have before me a, uh, document briefing notes from Randy Patrick, who is our, uh, previous... Our previous manager, and item number two in recommendations in his briefing notes.
If you want to make a motion to table it, it has just a motion, uh, that has to go, just, yes, Gary?
Yeah, a motion to table is non-negotiable. Five seconds.
Okay, so we have basically a motion to table resolution 2018-003. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, opposed.
Okay, uh, base... Yes?
Fenske, not allowed to vote for this. He recused himself before, so he will be totally out of this equation.
Clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Fenske?
On the January 1st, I'm no longer a Vale employee, so I'm no longer in perception of conflict or of, uh, interest. So, uh, I can go forward, hopefully the three councils that consistently oppose this on a conflict of, uh, interest basis will move on to more important matters, which is the graph one discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
We have, oh. Okay, uh, basic, I'm sorry folks, uh, basically we have to vote on the point of order as, to be taken into consideration? Oh, I, I make a decision?
In other words, he can unaccuse himself? Under the law?
If he's no longer an employee.
Vale?
Has approved.
Uh, I believe when he says in public that he's no longer an employee.
Two different things.
I think we will just...
One point of order, one point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The instance that Councilor, uh, Wong has raised is a point of conflict of interest. Uh, it's not to the individual counselor or volunteer to declare that. Uh, I have so declared that I am no longer in conflict as I am no longer a Vale employee. Uh, I do not apply proof to Councilor Wong, uh, that's not required.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the original point of order, as I was saying, when, uh, Mayor Fenske made his position, I am not going to accept the point of order. I will accept the motion, uh, to table was defeated. Thank you very much. So we will continue with discussion on this motion, resolution? Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Smook?
Yes?
The procedure is to go to the mover. I would like to speak after the mover of the resolution.
Okay, Penny?
I will obviously be supporting...
Would like to reserve my comments for the closing of debate, please.
Mayor Fenske?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to first, uh, thank the committee that worked on this, uh, agreement with Vale in bringing this forward. Uh, obviously with the decision that was made by Vale and the proposed, uh, grant and move letter that has been provided to us, uh, as the mayor of the city of Thompson, I'm not satisfied with the content, but I understand... That was made on a business decision, a business case decision. Understanding that a 20% cut in the first year and a 50% cut in the year two, three, and four, uh, is quite significant. Uh, we, as a council, are being proactive and we proactively solicited the profits of Manitoba months ago in anticipation of this. Uh, I live, I am in Winnipeg, uh, City Manager Gary Sepatelli spoke, uh, to meet with Minister Patterson tomorrow to officially ask, uh, for profits assistance, uh, in the making up the difference in the, uh, reduction in the grant and move. The community at large needs to be, have, uh, sustainable revenue. Uh, the grant and move have been part of the agreement since 1956, which has been duly signed with the province of, of Manitoba at the time, and April at the time, and subsequently valuing, uh, Vale operations. So, having said that, uh, we have a task ahead of us, and I would echo the lady in question period, uh, the council should get down to work and deal with the issues in front of them, uh, and stop the continuous groundstanding. We have a serious job to do, and I would hope that council will move forward in minimizing the impact, mitigating the impact of this decision by Vale. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Valentino?
To comment a little bit on this also, as I was the chair of the Grant and Lou Committee, and I'm one of the counselors with the flu. But I would like to personally thank the, the entire committee, and on the school district of Mystery Lakeside at the table, we had Injel Bartlett, Kelly Wazalu, correct?
Kelly Naught.
Kelly Naught, my apologies, Kelly. Uh, we went through two board chairs, Dawn McDonald and Janet Brady and Leslie Tucker. And on the city of Thompson side, we had our administration team of Gary Sepatelli and Jenny Krantz, Penny Byer, Colleen Smook, and myself. On the Vale side at the table, thank you to Mark Scott, Kirk Regular, and Darren Dodds for transparency to the public and to, uh, our counselors. We started meeting on May the 3rd, we met 13 times, which took us to about 32 hours of meetings. We updated council nine times in camera. And we also had this as a standing agenda item in camera at the finance and admin meetings, which meet every two weeks. And those meetings are open to councils, to counselors, and they are welcome to attend also to be, to be briefed. So we tried to keep it as transparent to all of you with how many times we've met. Obviously, it was very challenging to be a part of this, definitely learned a lot. Obviously, um, I'd like to recognize the comments from less than Monica at your general inquiries. Um, I also like to apologize already right off the hop, as you can see, for, for, uh, some of the actions, as I totally agree that this is a, a great starting point now for everybody to see that we are all part of the city of Thompson, and we all have some cha-challenges ahead of us. Um, I drive the same streets as you guys, the same pottles. I wanted the arena to be open with ice in it 12 months out of the year. Now I'm talking about how we're going to have to cut hours because we are in a changing time and changing economic time. That's the reality. So we have to come together and we have to figure this out and work together, and there are tough decisions. We as a council knew this, that we were faced with this when we got elected as one of the challenges ahead of us. So, was it tough? Yep, it is what it is, it's the reality. It's a business decision, it's a business case that Vale is going through, and it's an economic changing time for us as the city of Thompson. But the key is us. It's not us against you, it's not us against Vale, or us against the school district, it's all of us. So this is what's faced with us, and we have to work towards making it work. So we all still want to be here and live here and work here. And, uh, there's many, uh, moving factors, and we all have to come together to make this a good thing, and we can make this work. I really, really do firmly believe that. I'd also like to acknowledge the province of Manitoba, because we have had some minister meetings, and whenever we've had the chance, whenever we were, we had the ability to be in front of them, we told them that this was coming forth to us here at the city, and that we have economic... and that we have economic challenges here within the city. And I appreciate the, I guess, the ears that they listen to us. They know after tonight that we will continue to be advocating with them to look for partnerships in ways that we can get through the economic times that are ahead of us. So I wanted to actually acknowledge them also for being a part of this process and that it's not over yet, just because we have this in front of us. We do still have a lot of work ahead of us working with this document. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Valentino. Any other comments before Councilor Byer's request to be last? Blake, then Ron?
First, I'd, I'd, first, I'm in, I'm in favor of this agreement. I realize that it's not, it's not what everybody would like to see in terms of what we're receiving. But it, I believe it was negotiated in good faith and that it it is the best agreement that the City of Thompson could have gotten at this time, recognizing that, you know, under nineteen fifty-six agreement, I think it was the, what Vale is required to give us is only about a million dollars right a year. So we're getting, we're getting well over that. This puts challenging, this puts a challenge in for our city for the future. And, but I know Thompson can, and the City of Thompson can meet that challenge.
When this committee was formed, I started with saying I had no confidence in this committee. Nothing has changed. Let's start there. To Mr., I mean, Mayor Fensky's meeting with Mr. Peterson to make up the shortfall tomorrow, this is absolutely ridiculous. If we are gonna sit here tonight and accept this offer and then say, we made this deal, but we don't like it, we want you to cough up the money now, let's get real. That's not going to happen. Now, to read what I wanted to read when I tried my tabling motion. Item number two on the briefing notes from Randy Patrick. The City of Sudbury was very successful in changing from a tax and lieu structure to a tax base structure. Thompson Unlimited should be tasked with providing background on Sudbury and evaluating the strategy that should be employed to make the changes. Now, there might be a report out there. Our due diligence was not done. We did not seek out this report.
Further, okay, just a couple comments. Thompson Limited is no longer an entity. And as a city, we have talked about possibly to go to the, it would have to be in conjunction with the government to go to the province and do taxes on Vale. But that's also a process which isn't gonna happen in six months or a year. So that is up to council after this. As for this information, we have already talked to ministers in that concerning the GIL. But until we actually had a firm number before us that we could bring a resolution, they could not make a commitment to help us, and we couldn't ask for specific things because we didn't have the numbers.
And if this is approved, we can do absolutely nothing. Because that's the deal.
Councilor Valentino?
Sorry, Councilor Wong?
Thank you.
Gary, can you explain to me definition of in principle?
The understanding is, obviously, is that council needs to pass a resolution. This agreement still has to go to the Vale Board of Directors for approval.
I Google it. The definition of in principle as a general idea or plan, although the detail are not yet established or clear. So now, my other question is, in your memo's second paragraph, the development of the LOU has been finalized. Question. When you stated finalize, how can you call this as a in principle?
As, as, as Councilor Wong, I mean, one question at a time. As Councilor Wong, if he was to reread the resolution, it says nothing about agreement in principle. The resolution is putting forth the agreement that has been offered to us by Vale, the final agreement from Vale. In regards to council's process, council must pass a resolution considering this resolution. Vale still has a process that they have to follow and get the agreement approved by their board of directors.
So when you use the terminology of in principle to write your resolution, do you mean it's still negotiable?
I, I'm not seeing as to sort of in the body of the resolution where it talks about approving principle of the Grant and Lou. The Grant and Lou is a document that's been offered by Vale to the City of Thompson, the School District of Mystery Lake, and the LGD of Mystery Lake. This is the final document that has been presented by Vale to those three parties. The city's process is to consider by resolution whether they consider approving this or defeating this. The process, depending upon the decision of council, Vale still has to take it to their board of directors for their internal approval.
Is not negotiable? Yes or no?
Clarification, Deputy Mayor's book?
Yes.
As stated previously many, many times, this is not a negotiation. The letter of understanding has been prepared by Vale, presented to council. Our process is to either accept or not accept by resolution the letter of understanding. Vale will then take that, the letter of understanding to their board later in January or the fifth day for their approval by board approval. So there is no mention of negotiation, no discussion of negotiation. This is not a negotiation. This is a letter of understanding that's been presented by Vale and the City of Thompson to act accordingly.
Thank you.
Mayor Fensky?
I'm not done yet. What was the amount? The GIL stated to pay us. Why I ask this question? Because under the resolution, there's no document attached. I believe the public like to know how much we're getting. So it's like a déjà vu again to me when you guys approved the resolution for the trail breaker without the sketch attached and the letter of support. So how the public would know what exactly we meant, what kind of deal we're making? So why there's no amount of document attached with this resolution?
Gary, can you add that?
So, I mean, and obviously, every member of council knows what the amounts are. To ask the question of something that you already know is, is something- No, no, but I mean, it obviously is for you to state the aspect. But I mean, I have no problem in order to state on your behalf or on council's behalf as to sort of what is, what has been offered through the, through the letter of understanding from Vale. It's a four-year agreement commencing January the first of two thousand and eighteen, terminating in December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. The four-year agreement starts in year one at four point eight million dollars. This is a reduction from the six million dollars that Vale has previously given on a Grant and Lou to those three parties, as I mentioned earlier. City of Thompson, the School District of Mystery Lake, and the LGD of Mystery Lake. The second year of the current or the new letter of understanding is three million dollars with an ability to pay of an additional one point two million dollars based on a positive cash flow of twenty million dollars by Vale at the end of two thousand and eighteen. Years three and four are three million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
My other question is, what was the reason Vale using to reduce the GIL amount?
Basically, the cost, the price of nickel, the cost to retain. Vale has mandated all of their sites and that to look after their own expenses and that. So Thompson, Vale is now, has to basically stand on its own two feet and whatever money it takes in. And then, so that sort of determines whatever they have for cash flow. It has to work out, and that's why we're, like, in some ways, we're very lucky to get the four point eight million this year.
If I'm wrong by interpretation of your explanation. So Vale is using the nickel price for this reduction. Am I right or wrong?
No, not, not-
It's, it's a combination of things, Duncan.
So since that is a combination of everything, why are we entered the four years instead of short term?
Basically, we entered a four-year agreement in order so that the next agreement will come after the next council gets to be on here a couple of years. And they have had a chance to get their feet wet and understand it more. With a shorter term, they would come on and then basically have to start negotiations for agreement or whatever you wanna call them. And this way, we, they'll have a bit of understanding how the city runs. With having the four-year agreement, it, the city will also have stepped up to the province and that and with the School District, and we will have figured out how we are going to operate and what the different face of Thompson may look like under these new dollars.
Now I'm gonna give my remark. My family and I, been a homeowner and a business owner over two decades. And now I'm also a commercial property owner. My family and I paying municipal, what you call municipality tax since then. Every year, my property and business tax go up due to, I call that a man-made inflation. But this has really amazed me how this GIL process been conducted. It go down for the last couple of agreement. Why? Let me tell you why. Because of conflicts of interest in place. Vale is one of the two largest mining company in the world. Recently, to be specific date, which is December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, the president and the board of Vale approve a big dividend paid out to the shareholder of two point one million dollars. I can write down the whole amount, but I just shot it, two point one million dollars of outstanding share, which is five point one billion. Did I say million or billion earlier? I think I said million. It's two point one billion with a B. Sorry about that. And for the outstanding share of five point one billion dollars, which is roughly about zero point four one nine 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 per share, and on March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, that's when they paid it out. Based on this information, how can Vale claim they are not making money? Cobalt is one of the hot commodity in the market right now due to the demand and supply of electrical car. I have a very close friend that worked as a purification technician for over three decades for Inco and Vale. He told me there's a lot of cobalt here. Every pound of nickel, it will get a pound of cobalt. I'm not a chemist, but I believe this is some cobalt, perhaps a lot. When I propose to add all of us to be on the team and got rejected by mayor team unanimously to reject two businessmen and a longtime-serving council, Judy Clotta, which has been appointed to a member of few GIL process in the past, that decision made by this people was extremely recklessly and carelessly. These people like to play politic, but they don't know what the power is about politic, in my opinion. Instead of what best for Thompson, this is disgusting to the people that voted for them. Remember this. Vale is still digging the same amount of ore out of the ground. Why are we allow them pay less? Record of vote, please.
I'd just like to make a couple comments to that. And I apologize to the rest of our committee for the derogatory remarks on our, to our committee. Also, when Vale paid out those dividends, if they would have been paid out as a part of Thompson's portion, they would not have got very much money out of the Thompson division. As you stated yourself, it's a multi-billion dollar company and other. And they have, I have each division standing on our own two feet. They could just as easily taken us and flicked us out the door for loss of money in dollars as they could of keeping us in the fold. I think we're very lucky to be in the fold, and I would like to just thank you. And as for politicking in that, I really think most of us are here to do the best for the City of Thompson. I myself have been here for forty-six years and take exception that we are not looking out for the residents of Thompson. Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Councilor Clotta?
Thank you. I, I realize you're new as deputy mayor, but the chair of the meeting doesn't debate. So perhaps city manager can bring you up to date on what your role is.
Clarification, Deputy Mayor's book?
Yes, sir. Mary?
Just for Councilor Clotta, just to clarify, the chair is eligible to just open discuss any, any motion that's on the table. If she prefers that with the council's indulgence. There is no prerequisite that the chair cannot participate in the debate.
Thank you, I apologize. Councilor Clotta?
Thank you. Okay. I, I don't see the point in opposing this, but I do have some concerns, and I would like to speak about it. The current Grant and Lou agreement expires on December thirty-first, so we're without an agreement until we approve this, this evening. I think that, you know, locally, we, we may be operating at a deficit. This is one of the largest companies in the world, and Thompson is a subsidiary. And I believe that, that the company does have an obligation to the city where they operate. And I, I don't want to discredit them because I realize that they do contribute to the community. Certainly, they're paying one-eighth of the rec center cost was, it bailed us out. We were debenturing heavily for that initiative, and they do step up to the plate as corporate citizens. But we're going to approve this tonight. And tomorrow, our mayor is going to meet with the finance minister and ask, ask for the province to, to take out of the mining fund the difference in what we'll be losing or to subsidize us because of, of the loss of the Grant and Lou. And I, I think that, I, I just think that that's going to be totally unsuccessful. So, you know, I've been in Thompson for over fifty years. I've been on council for over twenty years. And when I started with council, our Grant and Lou was higher then than it is now. Now, I don't think there's anybody here who's making the same wages that they made twenty-two or twenty-three years ago. So I, I do believe that, that it's unreasonable. I, I think that we should have perhaps gone in with a professional negotiator if, if the current counselor, council didn't have confidence in, in some of us with a bit more experience. I, I, I'm not happy with it, but we're at the eleventh hour. I don't think we have the power to do anything about it. So I do intend to, to vote for it, even though I have many concerns. But last, our last agreement was for five years. That was unheard of for many years. The traditional length of the agreement was for three years. The last one was five years, and now we're going to go into a four-year agreement. I, I think it's time that we started looking at assessment and taxation. It's, it takes a long time to do it. We have four years to look at that, and I think it's high time we started. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Valentino?
Officer, on the committee, I'd just like to offer a few points for clarification. One is that, and we updated council, as I said before at these in-camera meetings. But one of the things when I said about we meet with the province and part of the process is advocating, and that's what you're supposed to do as a city councilor, is advocate for our citizens. So we continue to do that. And part of advocating was always letting them know where things are at. So tomorrow, they will know what was decided on tonight at council. The other thing I want to be clear on is there's two parts to the Grant and Lou. Vale can play us, pay us a minimum based on head, part of it is based on headcount. We all know they're having a reduction of employees as they move to a mine mill operation. They're gonna have a definite reduction in employees. We all know it. So they can pay us just the minimum, which would be approximately a million dollars. They are still paying us four point eight million dollars. Okay, so there's two parts to it. So let's be clear when we talk about not doing what's best for Thompson. Sorry, Lessin Monica, but I will not sit here and have a council- Monica, but I will not sit here and have a council say I don't do what's best for Thompson. I'd be happy to share an attendance report card for, for counselors that don't show up to minister meetings so that they would know what's best for the city of Thompson. And I also wanted to make sure we had a recorded vote.
Counselor Wong?
Exactly what I tried to say. When the shortfall, which is 1.7 million dollars, they're supposed to go to school board. Guess what happened? They go to tax the school board, the tax, education tax would go up. It doesn't matter, at the end, the taxpayer going to pay out one way or another. Another comment I'd like to make, the, our mayor is meeting the, the minister tomorrow. Why are we rushed to approve this tonight? Which is mean a cart before horse. We don't know what the minister stand for, the province stand for. Why not we table it until we get all the information before we make this decision? But you guys always like to rush, rush, rush to get it, go through, and then later on, you go to the province and say, oh, we need help. The province say, you guys all elected official, you guys make up your mind, you guys already make the decision. What there for me to bargain? What there for me to talk about it?
Clarification, Deputy Mayor Smook?
Mayor Fenske?
Thank you. Just to clarify, Counselor Wong's comments, again, based on nothing but fiction. We have, as a council, most recently at AMM, met with ministers. Previous to that, President Les Elsworth and myself and our other members met with Minister Freezin and Minister Sustainable Development at that time in regards to the mining reserve fund that we would be asking for. I want to congratulate President Les Elsworth for being very forceful in that meeting that we would be coming after all the 10 million that's available. We started this discussion months ago. Council has been well aware that we have been in discussion and moving this forward. So, this is no surprise, this is no 11th hour, this is no rush to judgment. This is due diligence done by our administration and council and committees to do, to get the best deal they can for the city of Thompson. Again, understand, this is not a negotiation. The previous grant-in-lieu included a $3 million capital proportion for the city of Thompson only. The previous grant-in-lieu to that was 7.5 million dollars and was subsequently reduced to $6 million. There were no professional negotiators at any time. This was all done by council and members of Vale, Inco at the time. So, again, emphasizing, as much as councils want to say that this is a negotiation and that we have a position to play, we don't. The province in Manitoba signed an agreement in 1956 with Inco at the time that stipulated what the grant-in-lieu would be, a part A and a part B, as Counselor Valentino was upfront. We, as council, are well aware of all of these numbers. All of the councilors speaking against this are well aware of all the discussions, the in-camera meetings with, with Mark Scott and the public meetings with Mark Scott in regards to the current financial situation of Vale in Thompson, Manitoba. This is not about Brazil, this is not about the corporate conglomerate of, of Vale, this is about the city of Thompson and Vale, Manitoba division. In order to be sustainable for many years to come, this is a business decision made by, by vision, conscious with Vale, Canada, and Brazil, to ensure that there is a long-term limited future for this community. So, to say that we should walk away from it or to, basically say this isn't good enough, we want something else, Vale has already stated, basically, this is the letter of understanding. The second position is not accepted, is part A, which is about a million to a million five based on employee numbers. So, the city of Thompson, the groups involved, school district, Mr. Lake, and the committee have done their best to do, to get the, the best deal they can from the, from Vale, explaining basically the impact of this decision. Not that we can negotiate the decision, but basically explaining, if you do this, this is the impact. We've pleaded that case as a treaty, and they've done a good job in regards to the current financial situation that Vale is in. And so, again, we're, we're seeing a lot of grandstanding here. We are moving forward in a principled manner to do the best for the city of Thompson. Again, we're meeting with Minister Peterson tomorrow to affirm the numbers that have been made public tonight and to further discuss the opportunity to access the mining reserve fund to ensure the sustainability of our community for many years to come.
Thank you, Mayor Fenske. Counselor Valentino, do you have another comment? No? Counselor Matichuk?
I just want to put it in perspective for the people, the citizens of Thompson, that this is a reduction of a little over $10 million from what was in place, the agreement that was in place last week. That's what we're voting on here tonight, giving up over $10 million. I would be voting against.
Anybody else to speak? Counselor Byer?
Thank you for letting me close the debate. I'm certainly tempted to make comments about process and some of the other comments I made, but out of respect for the two people who asked for us to remain professional and work together, I would like instead to offer a different perspective from what other counselors have. Ever since I moved to Thompson, one of the things that I could never quite understand is how the city has always allowed itself to be so dependent on its major employer for its sustainability. Right from the year I moved here in 78, I used to discuss that question with people who were on council then. I believe for us to be healthy and sustainable for the next 20, 30, 40 years, we have to learn to stand independent and not be as reliant and as needy of our major employer. I believe that we're only going to be able to do that if we grow our economy, if we focus on building more commerce in the city, more business, more whatever we need to do so that we're not dependent on anyone. I think when we get to that part, then discussions like this will probably not be so difficult or terrible. I would like to thank the people involved on the committees from Vale, the school district, our own committee. I would like to thank people for their input. At the very beginning, if you recall, I did ask at this table at an in-camera meeting what each of you wanted us to work towards. I didn't get any answers from anybody on council in terms of what we want, what they wanted us to work for. So, we went, we went forward and, and actually initially, I, I believe we had Vale in a state of being, feeling appalled at what we started off with and what they came back with at first had us appalled as well. And now, we've reached a point, I think, that is, given the business climate at Vale is probably as generous as they can afford to be at this time, based on their cer- current situation. So, I would just like people to focus on, where do you want to see Thompson 20, 30, 40 years from now? Do you want us, to see us in the same situation where we're squabbling over who's on a committee, where we're squabbling over whether we could have got more or not, whether it's a discussion or negotiation? Do we want to be squabbling like that 20, 30 years from now? I think not. I think we want to be in a more sustainable position, we want to be healthier, and we're only going to do that if we start focusing on expanding our economic base. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Byer. Okay, we're going to call for a recorded vote for Resolution 2018003. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Voting in favor, Counselor Clada, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Foley, Mayor Fenske. Voting against, I did, I, yeah, I did run the round. Voting against, Counselor Matichuk and Counselor Wong.
If you may, you, oh, you got one voice. Who was the one in favor?
Telephone people, please vote again.
Aye, Mayor Fenske.
Dennis, are you, Foley, are you still there?
Excuse me, may I have that cut off?
Okay, I apologize, yes.
He did make a comment previous to the meeting that he may have to leave the meeting, so perhaps that's what happened.
Please strike Counselor Foley's name. Okay, we'll try.
Dennis? Hello, you there? Hello? Yeah, I'm here. Mayor Fenske's on the line.
Counselor Foley, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, were you on the line when we did the vote for the resolution 2018003? Do you need the resolution read again?
Start.
Would you like me to read the resolution for you to vote on?
Please.
Okay. Resolution 2018003, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Ellis, whereas Vale Canada Limited, the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the local government district of Mystery Lake are signatories to a five-year, five, five-year letter of understanding regarding the municipal tax and funding agreements 2013 through 2017. And whereas the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the local government district of Mystery Lake concluded discussions with Vale Canada Limited regarding a new four-year letter of understanding effective January 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2021. Now, therefore be it resolved that council approved the letter of understanding between Vale Canada Limited, the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the LGD of Mystery Lake for the Manitoba tax and funding arrangements for a four-year term commencing January 1st, 2018 and terminating on December 31st, 2021. We have so far had a recorded vote. We had Counselor Clada, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Mayor Fenske voted in favor. Counselor Matichuk and Counselor Wong did not, voted against. Can we have your vote, please?
I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Please note that Counselor Foley voted in favor. Yes, Counselor?
Hasn't been asked whether or not he heard debate and maybe reopen debate.
I, I really don't think we're going to reopen debate. Counselor Foley, do you feel you need to hear the debate on this?
If anybody feels they need to continue the debate, I will not be against it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay.
Boo-boo here. You're not supposed to tell him how we vote. You should ask him how you want to vote first, and then you tell them in favor, who's in favor. But you already tell him what we are doing, so now he can, you know, you already have a picture there. I think that's wrong, in my opinion.
I apologize, but that's not the way I perceived it. Mr. Sepatelli, are we going to accept the vote and is it okay to carry on?
No, the vote is fine. It shouldn't be obviously up to you whether you want to reopen debate or not.
No, we're not going to reopen debate. Okay, resolution passed. Next resolution, 2018004, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be it resolved that council authorizes administration to enter into a contribution agreement between the city of Thompson and the Thompson Hotel Association, effective date October 27, 2017 to December 31, 2018. Moved by Counselor Byer. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I'm supporting this. This, these discussions go back, as many people know, more than a year now. And I realize that there are some people who feel that perhaps we should not be making the $200,000 for 2017. Our promise to this organization was that if they formed and became a legal entity of hotels, we would honor that $200,000. So, as far as I'm concerned, that part of this resolution is keeping this promise. We have to be good for our word. Excuse me. I believe that this association is, it's, it's actually very refreshing to see people get together and form an organization that is going to work towards bringing positive events to Thompson, make, bringing that pride, if you will, bring back some of the excitement, help to increase or improve the economy of the city, improve tourism, improve job opportunities in the service industry. There's lots of potential spin-off to this. I hope this organization has, excuse me, every success, and as I said, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Mr. Sepatelli?
For council's information, obviously, the, the details of, of this two-year agreement, as indicated, is contributions out of the accommodation tax revenue that the city receives of $200,000 for the, the year 2017 and, and $200,000 plus an incentive for 2018, which is based on 75% of accommodation tax revenue above the established threshold of $500,000. The, the grant is conditional upon the association undertaking a number of things, one of being the, the staffing and establishment of an office in Thompson and incorporating a group to include all the organizations that currently pay the accommodation tax and are subject to pay the accommodation tax in the future, providing semi-annual reports on the projects that they've initiated, provide a report for the number of bed nights and tours generated by the funding and amount of sponsorship the event received, provide annual plan with the goals of the association to, to council, and have a member of council sit on the, on their board as, as a liaison. The payments of the contributions will follow two equal installments for the 2017 contribution, with the first installment upon approval of the resolution tonight by council and the second installment upon the opening and staffing of an office in Thompson prior to April 30 of 2018, and the 2018 contribution of two equal installments of $100,000. The first upon the opening and staffing of an office in Thompson and the second being July 1st of this year.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Valentino?
I'm supporting this. Tonight also, I think that this is some creative thinking, but I think it shows that we're trying something different because we can't just sit still and just exist as a city. We have to try, and I think that this, creating this agreement with the Thompson Hotel Association is a good effort on our part and a good partnership now that we've created, whether they can bring new events to town or some tourism events or whatever it may be. I think that this clearly shows that we're trying and we're trying something different, and I really hope that this works out and that it will be a success for not only them but for us as the city of Thompson.
Counselor Ellis?
I'm also in favor of this. This would also, this would stimulate our, our tourism industry, stimulate our accommodation, the amount we collect in our accommodation tax. We're looking at increasing number of bed nights and increasing number of events and the number of tourists in town, and, and it's also a partnership with the professionals within the tourism industry. So, it, they have a vested interest in, in seeing that, that this is a success as, as we do, and, and I believe it will be a success.
Thank you. Any further comments? At the council's indulgence, I would like to make a statement. This is something that I had foreseen happening from when we first had the hotel accommodation tax, long before I was ever a city councilor. So, I would just like to thank the committee for all their hard work in this start of, of partnership and an agreement, and wish us all the best together in the years to come. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Smook?
Yes, oh, Mayor Fenske?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment, I'll be supporting this resolution. Again, for the general public and viewers' information, the city of Thompson initiated this, this initiative a year ago with the Thompson Hotel Association, along with the, this council's previous budget deliberations in reducing the business tax by 0.25 and also by most recently passing the tax abatement by law in regards to enhancing tax relief for those businesses, business owners that own property to expand their current existing businesses or to build new. And so, the city of Thompson and council has been working hard to do what we can from the city's perspective and under the procedures that we control. This is the third of three initiatives that are put forth. I'm glad to see that it's coming forward. I'm glad to see that it's coming forward now, it took some time, but it's worth honoring the two thousand and seventeen contribution, and looking forward to the increased business that the hotel association will endeavor to bring to the city, bring new monies into our community to make sure that we're sustainable for many years to come.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, we'll call for the question for resolution two thousand and eighteen zero zero four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Resolution two zero one eight zero zero five, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Byer, whereas the City of Thompson develops a general capital plan as part of their annual budget deliberations, and whereas administration of the City of Thompson has provided council a general capital plan for two thousand and eighteen, and whereas council has discussed the two thousand and eighteen general capital plan and agrees in principle to the plan. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the two thousand and eighteen general capital plan in principle and direct administration to prepare the necessary documents to implement the plan. Go to administration.
Yeah, for council information, obviously, this is an annual resolution that's brought forth at the start of the year that, if considered by council, gives administration the ability to start working on the required documentation, whether they be tenders or requests for proposals or quotes, in order to sort of start planning for the capital projects that have been approved as part of the budget process.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino, you have any comment?
Because it's good to do the work beforehand now that we can get these proposals for tender out because maybe we are ahead of, say, Steinbach or Portage, or whatever they may be, they're tendering on for their capital work. So I think this is good for us to get these out as soon as we can, to get the best price and get contractors committed to coming up here to work.
Thank you, anybody else? Counselor Wong?
For the last three years, I've been sitting on council to listen to this in principle. For the last three years, I couldn't name one capital project that we really get the best price. I can name a few that over budget. So to support this in principle is pretty tough. Question number one will be, there's no amount, we don't know how much we are approving in principle, to go out and tender to get the best price. And I'll give you a prime example, the canopy right beside here, the city hall. We started from thirty thousand dollars, and then we go up to fifty thousand dollars. Now we are at eighty-five thousand dollars, so where's the best price come from? And then the, what you call the maple leaf, came here the last of the season to do the job, and now sometimes it's frozen on the ground or snow cover. So, but we still pay the premium rate for them to do the job, so where is the best price? And also, another reason I like to bring it up is like, from the first resolution, we tried to approve the GIL, which is, Valleys do have to present to the board to approve this amount, whether they like it or not, we don't know. Maybe they come and say, look, I think we paid too much, we need to cut more. So how are we going to put a budget or money into the capital plan for tendering? So, again, the cart before horse. Also, as a council, we have ability to call a special meeting if we need it. So why are we need to do this in principle? I'd like to have a recorded vote.
Thank you. City manager?
Just to clarify, a number of things that Counselor Wong is bringing forth. First of all, all of council knows what the exact value of each one of the projects and the overall amount for the two thousand and eighteen capital plan. It's a process that they have been involved in as part of the budget deliberations. It's a process that they have agreed in, by consensus to bring it forth. This process here allows administration to start preparing the necessary documentation through the procurement process of which we have a policy and have to follow, as council overall should be aware as to what those procurement policy procedures are. So we have to go out, send out if it's a tender to, whether it be on marks, if it's a certain value. There's a number of trigger amounts that's in the procurement policy that council has passed, and council knows what those trigger amounts are. This gives administration the ability to go out there, tender it early in the hopes of getting the preferential pricing. There are a number of projects that are sent out. Unfortunately, do we get as many bid applications back as we would like? In a lot of cases, it may not be. But at the end of the day is that there's a process, whether it's through the paving, or whether it's through another capital project, or whether it's for a purchase of a piece of equipment. If it's over fifty thousand dollars, the awarding of that contract comes to this table at council. Council then would award that process. That's a process that has been in place for years. This, in regards to the improvement in principle of the capital program, has been in place for this council and previous council. That allows administration to undertake the necessary work so that we can get the preferential pricing as soon as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Just wanted to point out that so far, unless something's changed that I've missed, what we're approving in principle today is all coming out of reserves. It's not coming out of our tax base, and the public should know that. That's, I think, going on for eight years now that we've been able to do our capital projects without touching tax dollars, without having to tax people for it.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, we'll call for the question. A recorded vote, yes, for resolution two thousand two oh one eight zero zero five, no recorded vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Voting in favor, Counselor Calada, Deputy Mayor Valen, or Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Matichuk, Mayor Fenske, Counselor Foley, voting against, Counselor Wong. Thank you. Resolution two oh one eight zero zero six, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Byer, whereas the City of Thompson develops a utility capital plan as part of their annual budget deliberations, and whereas administration of the City of Thompson has provided council a utility capital plan for two thousand and eighteen, and whereas council has discussed the two thousand and eighteen utility capital plan and agrees in principle to the plan. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the two thousand and eighteen utility capital plan in principle and direct administration to prepare, pardon me, the necessary documents to implement the plan. Go to city?
So, I mean, obviously, that this is the, really the sister resolution in regards to the general capital. This is for the utility capital, and really, my comments and rationale as stated for the general capital apply to this resolution as well.
Counselor Valentino?
My comments are the same. Utility capital.
Counselor Wong? So for resolution two thousand and eighteen zero zero six, in a recorded vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? So voting in favor, Counselor Calada, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Matichuk, Mayor Fenske, Counselor Foley. Voting against, Counselor Wong. Thank you. Next resolution, two zero one eight zero zero seven, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that council approved sole sourcing the Dectron valve replacement to Royal Mechanical Services at costs not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, all applicable taxes included. Go to administration for support?
Director of Community Services to explain his memo.
To mayor and council, this is getting near the end of our chemical upgrades to the pool that we approved by council for nearly a year. We've got about three more parts of projects to do, and this is one of the smaller integral parts. It's actually internal components in the Dectron. The reason that we're going with sole sourcing this company, Royal Mechanical Services, we're the ones who have the proprietary rights to communicate with Dectron in Quebec, and they work with the proprietary codes, with all of the computer systems, and they can do everything onsite that other companies can't do. They were the ones who got us operational in May, after the pool shut down within two days, and they came onsite with all of their proprietary equipment. So that's why I'm going with them.
Questions? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, carried unanimously. Resolution two zero one eight zero zero eight, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas the Human Resources Committee has reviewed and is recommending approval of the company vehicle policy, now therefore be it resolved that the council approved the company vehicle policy. Management?
First, the three policies that are being brought forth by the HR committee. Really, so the travel policy, the next resolution on the company vehicle policy, and the third one being the criminal record check policy, really puts into place, into a policy, sort of the practice that the city has operated under in regards to these three areas. So the first one up is really the travel policy, which will identify travel options and standards, including documentation required and procedures to follow when employees are traveling for the City of Thompson business.
Thank you. Counselor Ellis, do you have anything to add?
This has been reviewed by the Human Resources Committee, so, and it's being afforded as a recommendation, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Wong?
Thank you. Is this policy included of heavy equipment? Or just the vehicle, which is like half-ton or three-quarter ton? What are they included?
The travel policy from employees of the City of Thompson. Yeah, the next resolution will deal with vehicle policy. Travel.
Vehicle policy?
It doesn't say that.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, this is vehicle, sorry.
So, no, it's in regards to really just the fleet vehicle usage?
So, is this the one, or no?
Company vehicle policy. Sorry.
Agreement, equipment, or no?
So are we going to have it eventually?
The usage of fleet vehicle.
One for in future, or? No, no, the heavy equipment policy, how they handle it. Because I read some of the, talking about heavy equipment, so I thought this is all amalgamate into one big policy, which is, I like it, but it just, I want a clarification about this.
I mean, obviously, there are certain aspects of it in regards to ensuring that the employees have the proper qualifications for it, but this specifically is for the fleet vehicle usage.
Table it and get the terminology right before we approve this? There's some is in there is kind of contradict, or not contradict, I mean, is open up a lot of discussion for that in the future.
As indicated, that it is primarily for the fleet vehicles, but it does have items and expectations of people operating any piece of city equipment. I can direct you to, under employee expectations, really number eight, use of handheld cellular telephones are prohibited by operating any City of Thompson vehicle, right? So I think it's for everything, but it's primarily for the operation of fleet vehicles.
Indulgence, I'll speak again. When I read it and when we discussed it, it's basically for the vehicles. If we want a heavy equipment policy, I think that would have to be something else. It would, at the request of a counselor or council, be brought forward. Any other questions? We'll call for the question. All those in favor of resolution two zero one eight zero zero eight?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Resolution two zero one eight zero zero nine, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas the Human Resources Committee has reviewed and is recommending approval of the criminal record check policy, now therefore be it resolved that council approved the criminal record check policy. Counselor Ellis, do you have anything to add? Oh, sorry, city manager, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, just to indicate, I mean, obviously, that this policy identifies the city standard in criminal records checks and child abuse registry checks for, depending upon the job that they may hold with the City of Thompson. So it's putting into place a policy of the practice that the city has been following over a number of years.
Counselor Ellis, still?
The same as the last policy, this was brought forward at the Human Resources Committee. It was reviewed, and it's being recommended by the committee.
Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution two zero one eight zero one zero, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas the Human Resources Committee has reviewed and is recommending approval of the travel policy, now therefore be it resolved that council approved the travel policy. City manager?
Previous comments in regards to, this is in regards to identifying travel options and standards and the required documentation when employees are traveling for city business.
Counselor Ellis? Any other further comments? Counselor Valentino?
Clarification, that travel indemnity bylaw that we have to pay, whether it be mileage or the food, the per diems, does that get looked at on an annual basis? As, you know, the province has an amount, or, like, I don't want this to be, like, stuck that this is what it is in today's value?
Yeah, the indemnity bylaw hasn't been looked at from council for a while. So we don't look at it on an annual basis.
But if you wish us to. Okay, anybody else with question? Call for the question. All those in favor of two zero one eight zero one zero? Carried unanimously. Resolution two zero one eight zero one one, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be it resolved that council ratify the board members to the Thompson Public Library Board for the two thousand and eighteen as follows. Penny Byer, Sue O'Brien, Kathy Nezio, Alicia Bedford, Jason Closeen, Geraldine Dixon, Shamila Tethy. Yes, city manager?
The resolution that council has to consider as part of the board membership on an annual basis to the Thompson Public Library.
Counselor Valentino, any? Hope for the comment, anybody else's comments? Okay, call for the question, just, well, Counselor Byer has left the room temporarily. We'll call for the question anyway, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I myself. Please note that it was unanimous, but Counselor Byer has left the room, so I guess we have, it's eight, voting in favor. Resolution two zero one eight zero one two, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be it resolved that council approved the attendance of Mayor Fenske at the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee Meeting in Winnipeg on January fifth, two thousand and eighteen. And be it therefore, be it further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw eighteen ninety-seven dash twenty thirteen. Okay, Counselor Byer has stepped out. Oh, first, city manager, would you like to make comment?
Okay, then, I mean, obviously, that this resolution for Mayor Fenske, who currently is in Winnipeg, is primarily for insurance purposes, and there's no cost to the City of Thompson.
Thank you. One moment. Counselor Byer, we have just talked about the resolution for the attendance of Mayor Fenske at Provincial Municipal Advisory Board. Do you have any comments? Anybody else, questions, comments? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Resolution two zero one eight zero one three, moved by- Resolution 2018-013, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas the 2018 Manitoba Winter Games powered by Manitoba Hydro will be held in Thompson, Manitoba on March 4 to the 10, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that council declared the 2018 Manitoba Winter Games a special event in the City of Thompson. Go to city manager?
This is really a formality and a request by the whole society to declare this as a special event. And it's a resolution that council has passed previously on other events declaring them a special event.
Thank you. Counselor Ellis?
I'm going in favor of this to be a major event for the City of Thompson. And bring, it'll bring many people to Thompson and will raise our profile.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried unanimously. Resolution 2018-014, moved by Counselor Clata, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that bylaw 1945-2016, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, the province Manitoba, to establish?
No, that's, we've got one already, we've got the added resolution. We've got the added resolution.
Okay, well, this?
That's under bylaws.
Oh, it says, okay. Sure. Okay. Pardon me, we're going to do the added resolution. Apparently, what it says at the top of the resolution, but it's a bylaw. So we will go to Resolution 2018-015, moved by Judy Clata, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas Counselor Duncan Wong presented a motion to rescind bylaw 1957-2017 at the December 11 regular council meeting. And whereas pursuant to section 147-2 of the Municipal Act, the repeal of a bylaw is subject to the same requirements that apply to passing a bylaw. Now therefore be resolved that council direct administration to prepare a bylaw to rescind bylaw 1957-2017 and bring it forth to a regular meeting of council for consideration. Counselor Clata, or the city manager, do you have some comments on this?
No, just in order to sort of follow the process, Counselor Wong had presented a motion to rescind bylaw 1957-2017 at the December 11 council meeting. In order to address it, obviously, a resolution is brought forth tonight what council sees in front of them, which would then offer direction to administration if approved.
Counselor Clata?
Well, I believe any council has the right to bring a resolution back to be rescinded, so certainly I supported the resolution.
Question, Counselor Byer?
I put my name down as a secretary. Because I suspected that there was some new information to come forward with this, otherwise there would not have been the suggestion, suggestion to rescind or the request. So I'm looking forward to the new facts to present to this case.
Counselor Wong?
I have a question.
Okay, because it's a bylaw. So, we all have to approve the rescind under resolution before we go to the bylaw, or we can just strictly go to the rescind the bylaw and debate about it? I just want a clarification.
Hey, I'd like to ask the city manager for that clarification.
So, yeah, so because the bylaw 1957-2017 was given third reading, it automatically became into full force, in fact, the next day. In order to make any amendment or repeal or rescind a bylaw, council must follow the same procedures as establishing a bylaw. So they've got to do it by three readings. So obviously, we would have to create a new bylaw rescinding an existing bylaw. So this is the first step of a resolution, which would direct administration if passed to prepare that rescinding bylaw.
So, okay, in other word, it still can be defeated, is it?
Council, as part of their?
If they don't want to be heard.
Right, you brought forth the motion. We've got to address it at the regular meeting of council, which, this is what this resolution does. Council would vote on this resolution, whether they want to pass it or if it gets defeated.
Pass the rescind or pass the new bylaw?
This is directing administration to create a new bylaw rescinding the existing bylaw. Council, if they pass this resolution, would give administration the direction to prepare a new bylaw rescinding the bylaw. If council defeats this resolution?
It remains the same.
It remains the same.
Do you have further comments? Counselor Wong?
Can I debate now, or can I?
Yes.
Start my debate? Okay. The reason I bring this again, because the terminology they're using for amendment this bylaw, oftenly you heard about, is about AMM. But in the bylaw, they did not mention AMM at all. So it opened a debate in the future for future council or mayor, whoever want to put the name forward to attend different, different organization. So if this is the purpose, to stop people going to AMM before approval from the council, so why not put the name of AMM into the resolution section? The bylaw, I believe, is called 26th Amendment, right? That's Amendment, section 26, into the new bylaw procedural and organizational bylaw. That's one of my concern. Another concern is, what value, by controlling the council going to attend different organization, what value this will bring it to the taxpayer by having this bylaw to stopping council to go whatever they want to do? I believe this is strongly against the Constitution right. One of the Constitution right is, we have right to participate to any, any others' organization as we wish. So, to have this bylaw to control the council, to put a name forward to other organization, I think it's against that. So, another thing I'd like to add, AMM bylaw stated very clear. It's not everybody from the floor can go and put the name and become a director. You got to be, first step, has to be officially elected. So already have a stipulation there for whoever need to be attend. So now, by adding this bylaw to stop council to go there, to have a name put forward before approved by majority, it doesn't fit to this thing. And I believe, I remember, Counselor Deputy Mayor, you said it before, you say, we went, we're going to the AMM convention. I'm going to ask around, I'll see how the other municipality think about this. Have you got any answer yet from the rest? I need the report, because there's no update after the convention. So, due to all this factor I'm talking about, that's why I want to rescind this, or put the AMM into that resolution, into the bylaw, instead of just open, just director? Director means a lot of director we can be. We can be the MPI director, we can be the Regional Health Authority director, we can be the Public Utility Board director. That resolution, that bylaw, to me, is limited, limited people to go there to put a name. So, I'd like to put that AMM into it, if, let's say, this is what you guys wish to have in a bylaw, rather than open the door for interpretation in the future.
Okay, counsel's indulgence, I will answer Counselor Wong's question. I talked to Morden, Verden, Brandon, and Steinbach, and a couple other smaller communities that, pardon me, I have the notes at home. Basically, we, when we talked about this, what it is and how I perceive this, this is, we vote on anything at council that is going to cost the City of Thompson and councillors money to be on as a committee. Basically, if you want to be on the health board or whatever that's not reporting to City of Thompson, or you're not representing the City of Thompson that you're representing yourself at, then you don't need this, a resolution. This resolution is if you want to represent the City of Thompson at any of these different levels, and not necessarily just AMM. If the health board asked you as a representative of Thompson to go on that board, then you would need permission at this level. If it's just that they asked Duncan Wong's citizen, then you don't need that there. I will go on to city manager to either fix up what I've just said, or?
No, I'm really going to confirm as to what you said. I mean, obviously, the amendment that was put into place in the organizational procedural bylaw just identified is that when a council member is representing the City of Thompson, that they must get approval of a council prior to submitting their name to sit on an external board.
Thank you. Counselor Wong?
It's not what you say is going to cost taxpayer, it's not in this case. AMM pay for all expenses for the northern director to attend any meeting, which is, Counselor Byer can explain that. So it doesn't cost taxpayer here. So what is the point about it, what you just made?
City manager? First, city manager, and then Counselor Byer, then Mayor Fenske.
Yeah, no, just going to indicate, in most cases, that a director that sits on AMM, the majority of the costs are picked up by AMM. There are certain situations where the community does, or is responsible for, for cost, one being, obviously, registration at the, at the annual convention is picked up by the municipality, not picked up by AMM.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Just, just after listening to Counselor Wong's explanation, I'm just wondering if, is there a process that we can follow, rather than task our administration to develop a whole new bylaw to rescind? Is there a process to open up or look at that portion of the bylaw? And if it needs to be reworded, can, can, is there a process where we can do that? Rather than ask administration to go with it? That's a lot of work, putting together a whole new bylaw.
Did you have some suggestions, Counselor Byer, or do you have?
No, but if I get a chance to look at it for an hour, I can give you some suggestions.
City manager?
You know, the process is the same, whether you're rescinding a bylaw or even amending a bylaw, right? Changing one word in the bylaw, you still have to go through that same process of bringing it forth for three readings.
Mayor Fenske?
Thank you, just to clarify a couple statements. In regards to the process and previous bylaw, the intent of the change was to, or is to, ensure that an elected official that is appointed to represent the City of Thompson on a board or committee should have the support of the majority of council and should support positively the community and the City of Thompson council and administration. That's the intent. In regards to constitutionality, this has nothing to do with the, absolutely zero. This is a bylaw, or the organizational bylaw of the City of Thompson and the City of Thompson only. And we're speaking to the bylaw that was passed specifically to ensuring that as an elected official, if you want to represent the City of Thompson council, that you should require to have the majority of council's support and that you should speech positively and supportive of the City of Thompson, City of Thompson council and community. If outside boards, as Counselor Wong has intimated in regards to the Regional Health Authority or the Public Utility Board, those are citizen reps, those are not the municipality reps of the City of Thompson, so those would not require a resolution of council. You're a citizen rep, not a representative of the City of Thompson.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
That's fine.
Counselor Byer, I'm not going to support this, we already debated. We've debated this three times, passed it three times. I think that, as stated earlier, this has been debated and we have far more important things than, and that we could be putting our time towards.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes, city manager? Did I understand you right, that you, this will address costs and one of the costs is for members to attend the convention? Do we not always have a resolution appointing or approving those who are requesting to attend the AMM convention? So maybe clarify that for me?
Sure. Just a very good comment made by Counselor Wong, saying that?
Obviously, if you're a director of AMM, it's at zero cost to municipality. So I mean, I had indicated that that is incorrect. For most cases, that AMM does pick up the majority of costs, being a director. But there are certain instances, such as the registration costs at the annual convention that are picked up by the municipality. But you are correct in regards to council, does bring forth a resolution when they send out any member of council and city manager to attend any conference.
Counselor Wong?
Yes, well, if, if a board member of the AMM is going to the convention, we would obviously have to approve that, would we not?
In most cases, that we do bring forth a resolution, but there have been instances in the past when, as an organization, we're unaware as to the travel of, of AMM director. We bring forth a resolution for insurance purposes for that coverage.
Or, yes, Counselor?
Okay. Are all councillors' travel reservations and arrangements not made through City Hall? In my experience, they are. So it's not that, that it happens without the city being aware?
To differ, I mean, obviously, it has happened in the past, as the city is unaware. But as you indicated, when the city is aware and bring forth resolutions, administration does make the appropriate arrangements for travel of councillors and staff.
I see no obligation to pay if, if the city hasn't been involved.
In this situation, I would like for it to be asked to the sitting member whether she is representing Thompson or if she is representing the northern region.
Counselor Byer? Can you answer that?
On the table is. My main responsibility is to represent the region. Thompson, being the largest and most influential municipality in the region, certainly carries a lot more weight in a lot of the discussions.
Any further questions? We'll call for the? Recorded vote for Resolution 2018-015. All those in favor of motion? All the? Yeah, I read it at the beginning. Would you like me to reread it?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Resolution 2018-015, moved by Counselor Clata, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas Counselor Duncan Wong presented a motion to rescind bylaw numbered 1957-2017 at the December 11, 2017 regular meeting of council. And whereas pursuant to section 147-2 of the Municipal Act, the repeal of a bylaw is subject to the same requirements that apply to passing a bylaw. Now therefore be it resolved that council direct administration to prepare a bylaw to rescind bylaw number 1957-2017 and bring it forth to a regular meeting of council for consideration. All those in favor? Okay, all those against?
Opposed.
Opposed. Opposed. Okay, so voting in favor of the resolution was Counselor Matichuk and Counselor Wong and Counselor Clata. Voting against was Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Valentino, Mayor Fenske, and Counselor Foley. It's not passed. Live debate, debate? Thank you, folks. Okay, so then we're into the bylaws. 2018-014, moved by Counselor Clata, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be it resolved that bylaw 1945-2016, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson in the province of Manitoba, to establish water and wastewater rates within the said municipality, as amended, be given a second reading. City manager?
Yeah, so I'll provide some opening comments and I'll defer to their project specialist, Ms. Taylor, to provide the details in this. As part of a process, when we bring forth certain bylaws, obviously, that they're triggered as to acceptance at various other boards. In this case, obviously, the Public Utilities Board. So we've gotten comments back from Public Utilities Board after we passed first reading of our bylaw with some suggestions. And I'll defer to Ms. Taylor to sort of go through sort of those specifics as to the comments from the Public Utilities Board and really what's before council tonight.
So the first thing?
So the first thing was, there were some function errors. So in the table, there was errors in the function itself, which caused, when calculating, when the calculations were continued through, that the, there was some errors in the total quarterly amounts. When you're looking at 2017, it's, they're minimal changes. I mean, the, there was no change in 2017, which really doesn't matter at this point, because 2017's over. In 2018, there was a few more changes, that the residential, which is the majority of our meters, would see a nine cent difference, based on that, and then calculated through the Watt 10 would see a $55 increase, but we don't have any, any six, eight, and 10 inch meters, so those ones will not be affected, because at this current time, we don't have any. So the majority of them would see a nine cent difference in 2018, and a one cent difference in 2019, 2019, for that section. So the Public Utilities Board has requested that we adjust the rates, the schedule, the tables, and have it approved, second reading approved tonight, based on that. And then the other thing, additions that we added were, the calibration of the meter, and having that its actual cost, including the, the installation of a new meter and sending it out, as well as the damaged meter, and that's just to clarify in our bylaws, what the cost is for that. That's...
Thank you. Counselor Clotta, you have any questions?
No, not at the moment.
Yeah, so just to indicate, I'll see, this is part of this process, that when council first considered the, the rate application bylaw, was submitted to Public Utilities Board, and gave first reading October 3rd of 2016. As we've gone through that process with Public Utilities Board, they've come back with some minor amendments, in, in order to make the changes of the bylaw, which is before council tonight. I mean, obviously, our rate application is still before the Public Utilities Board, and the Public Utilities Board is, is holding a public hearing on January 23rd to hear two applications. The one is the city of Thompson's three-year rate applications from 2017, 2018, and 2019, and the other one is to hear the transfer of the water treatment plant from Vale to the city of Thompson, which will be held concurrently on January 23rd.
Thank you. Council indulge me, I'd like to ask a, a question. The 2017 rates, would there have been any difference to any of our water paying customers in Thompson?
For the residential meters, there would have been zero difference.
Any other questions? Counselor Wong?
Recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Clotta?
Yes, I just want to point out that the city of Thompson will pay for meters that malfunction. I think that's a very important thing to be, to know when you're looking at this bylaw.
That's always been there, but it's clarified there. Any other questions? Okay, and a recorded vote for bylaw 2018-014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and aye. All those against? Okay, voting in favor, Counselor Clotta, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Matichuk, Mayor Fenske, and Counselor Foley. Voting against, Counselor Wong. So that brings an end to our business part of the meeting tonight, and I apologize, being the first council I've had, and bit nervous about it. I will get better. We're now going into the mayor's report, and this is on behalf of Mayor Fenske, this part of the report. For your...
Just before you read the, the report, I would like to offer, on behalf of the city of Thompson, offer our thoughts and prayers to the owners, staff, and the guests that were affected by the fire last evening, and today of the interior in and the loss of, of that building and its contents, to congratulate and commend the response of our paramedic services, the RCMP, the volunteer department, and Vale's fire departments, and any others that assisted Domino's Pizza, who donated pizza, for the guys, gals, once. Again, I want to express our thoughts and prayers with the owners and staff, and guests who were in. I also want to commend our staff, and all of them, holding the blaze and minimizing the loss of injury and the loss of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Fenske, activities from December 1st, 2017, to January 2nd, 2018. Along with council members and City Manager Gary Sepatelli, we met with the Community's Economic Development Fund on December 13th. Attended the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee meeting, as well as met with Assistant Deputy Minister Grasifal, and Special Assistant Burnett of Justice in Winnipeg on December 15th. Along with council members and City Manager Gary Sepatelli, met with the Chamber of Commerce Executive on December 20th. Along with council members and City Manager Gary Sepatelli, we met with the union executive staff on December 28th. The biweekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continue. The monthly water treatment plant meetings continue. Various committee meetings were held, Development Review, Public Safety, Recreation, and Community Services, Communications, and Human Resources. There are no proclamations at this time. I, Deputy Mayor Smook, would also like to give kudos to the Thompson Fire and Emergency Services, Vale, Paint Lake, Domino Pizza, all the citizens of Thompson that were very generous and helped last night. I think the only request I would have is that, when we do have something that fires up on us, literally, at the last moment, that we get in touch with Fire and Emergency Services to let them direct us to where our services as a community are needed, it'd be much appreciated. Again, I would like to thank Les and Monica for their observations and comments tonight, and hopefully, 2018 will make us a better year. I'd like to thank Vale, the negotiating committee, for the Grant and Lew process, and I would like to thank you for the, the voting tonight. Again, to city management and staff, through this 40 below cold weather, we were outstanding streets, we were trying to move back snowbanks as we can. Equipment in 40 below just doesn't work the way it should, and caused submissions and that, which with the warmer temperatures will do. Thank you to the public for attending tonight, we appreciate it, and to everyone here, media for all that you've done in 2017, and will do in 2018. I wish a happy new year to one and all. Now we'll go to the rest of council for some comments. Thank you. Anybody have any comments? Oh, I guess I spoke too long. Again, I would like to apologize for my bit of stammering tonight, but I, I appreciate all of these, and for clarification for Counselor Wong. If you need any further clarification, get ahold of City Manager. Thank you. Motion adjourned. Valentino and Ellis. Thank you.